Shift Happens Podcast.
No matter where you live, good municipal services share the same DNA. They're efficient, they're effective, and these days, they must be digitally savvy. Modernizing city services isn't just a public safety issue. It's also a way to cut costs and serve residents better. But digital transformation can be a challenge, especially for smaller local governments. My guest today is Jeffrey Griffith, Deputy General Manager at Devonport City Council in Tasmania, Australia. He'll talk us through some key steps to success and how his own office has successfully evolved in recent years. Let's get to it. Hey, everyone. Welcome back to another episode of your Shift Happens Podcast. I'm so excited today to be speaking with Jeff Griffith from Devonport City Council, all the way out in Australia. How are you doing, Jeff?
Yeah, going well, Ducks. Thank you, and good morning. Good to catch up with you again.
Oh, same here. Well, first, I gotta congratulate you for the recent award that you've received for being a digital leader. Is that correct?
That's correct, Ducks. Actually, two awards now within Tasmania for the digital transformation that this council has driven.
Speaking of the awards, well, why don't you tell everybody what you're doing and how you're leading the city council in this, you know, day and age of digital transformation? And certainly, we'll talk more about what the last 18 months have been like.
Yeah, certainly, Ducks. Look, I guess by way of an intro to your audience, a bit of background about myself that may be relevant to how this digital transformation is being led. I think, as your audience can tell, I don't have much of an Australian accent. Originally from the US, the state of Arkansas, Little Rock. I moved to Perth, Western Australia in 1998. I was working for a caterpillar dealer in Arkansas. And then the cat dealer in Western Australia hired me, West Track. They're one of the largest cat dealers in the world. So I was there as Chief Information Officer for 15 years before coming to Tasmania. I met my wife in Western Australia. She happens to be from Tasmania, so that's how I landed here. So that, in that time, particularly at West Track, it was a very progressive, fast-moving organization that was very focused on leveraging technology. Coming to Tasmania and joining Devonport City Council three and a half years ago, I stepped into a world where I think local government has a long way to go to use technology to support their operations. So I joined and currently as Deputy General Manager. I started about three and a half years ago. And that journey, I guess, has gone from a council that, to me, looked like it was operating in the 1990s in terms of the way they leverage technology and efficiency of processes to a very modern digitally transformed council today.
Well, that's awesome. And for the benefit of those who may not be familiar with Tasmania and Devonport specifically, can you kind of share what it's like, the city, the population? What are some of the biggest industries that you support?
Yeah, certainly, Ducks. Tasmania, for your listeners, if most don't know, is an island state off the southeast coast of Australia. Tasmania, as a population, is about 500,000. Over the last couple of years, it's been one of the fastest-growing states in the country. In terms of the economy, it's been performing exceptionally well. Devonport is a city in the northwest of Tasmania on the coast. It has a population of about 26,000. Biggest industries would be agriculture, retail, tourism. Devonport is on the mouth of what is known as the Mersey River, where the spirit of Tasmania comes in from Melbourne through to Devonport, Tasmania, bringing many tourists in twice a day. So those are the biggest industries, Ducks, and that's a bit about Tasmania.
Awesome. Just to kind of circle back to your point earlier about this transformation. I mean, we're so fortunate to have you in our Shift Happens virtual conference last year. And you spoke about a major transformation that began prior to COVID. Can you walk us through the key highlights of that journey? I'm sure it has a lot to do when you first got there, seeing the disparity between the private industry and now serving in the government. So, you know, what are the key milestones? What's the inspiration? And you even highlighted the fact earlier about walking into the office like as if it was 1990s. So if you kind of walk through that whole journey and kind of share what it's like today?
Yeah, certainly, Ducks. Thanks for that. Yeah, as I said, I guess coming out of the corporate world, I had no prior experience in government. And in the corporate world, and particularly coming out of Caterpillar and Caterpillar dealers, you're driven to increase revenue and reduce costs and ultimately maximize profitability for all your shareholders. That drives behaviors around efficiency of process and leveraging technologies to support those efficient processes. I found stepping into local government, and I spent a lot of time in a lot of other local government entities across the state of Tasmania, and it really was like stepping back into the 1990s. It was a truly, you know, going back on the time machine and how it felt. And I guess what that was like was, in Devonport's case, imagine walking in in 2018 and seeing every employee is still running a desktop. There's not one single laptop within the organization. All systems are hosted onsite. There's a very small IT team of only three employees, supporting 175 employees for a small council. The complexity was very high. The systems typically did not work. Employees were frustrated. The council was very siloed in between departments. There was a lot of friction and a very poor culture within Devonport City Council. And it's not something that I've found to be inconsistent with other councils. So it was really an eye-opener for me. And I guess, Ducks, I looked at it and said, no, I can't step back in time and operate this way. You're gonna have to come forward in time and operate the way the modern world currently operates. So I guess that, looking at that, I knew that there's a better way because having come out of the corporate world, had the opportunity to live that. Many employees within local government may have been within local government for much of their career, and they didn't really know that there's another way, a more modern way to operate. So really, that was sort of what I experienced stepping in. And from there, Ducks began a long journey of digital transformation.
And I'm sure that's one of the biggest drivers for the council to have you come in and support and help and lead this transformation, while certainly, I'm sure it's complex, it's not easy. You know, between upgrading hardware devices, moving on-premises technology to the cloud, leveraging Office 365, that's a big shift. So how did people adopted and embrace the change? Was it hard? Was it straightforward? Because people are ready for a change? So on that aspect, what did that look like?
Yeah, Ducks, it's, I think when you're driving change, it doesn't matter what organization you're in, it's always hard. The good people within this council, as there are within any other council, as there are within Apppoint. Great employees coming to work, trying to do their job day in and day out. And we get set into a certain way of operating. And then you have someone like myself step in from the outside and try and drive that change. And I'm the outsider with no former local government experience. Who are you to tell us that there's another way to operate? Look, I went about it leveraging skills, again, that I had acquired at West Track. West Track, being a multi-billion dollar business, was implementing multi-billion dollar technology systems. And your appetite for failure certainly decreases the more dollars you spend on these sort of projects. So we implemented a project management office at West Track and leveraged a change management discipline known as ADCAR. ADCAR really starts A with the awareness. And I started with that, with the employees to say, look, I'm just gonna introduce you to another way of operating. And I invited people that I knew in Tasmania that had begun to make that journey to come in and just present on what Microsoft Office 365 was and some of these technologies to say, look, it's working for these other organizations, it could work for us. So ADCAR, A for awareness, was saying, look, and do you see value in that? And if you can get to the point of the employees seeing value for them personally, then they begin to develop the desire. That's the D in ADCAR. And once you have them at desire, you can take them to K, which is knowledge, and begin to train. And then they have the ability and it's reinforced. That's the R in ADCAR, just continually reinforced. So with every change initiative that I ran through Devonport City Council, that change management discipline was leveraged to help smooth the resistance that you naturally face within any organization. We've driven over 40 discrete initiatives from very small to very large, complex, costly programs of work. And without having leveraged that discipline with ADCAR and change management, and also PRINCE II for project management, the success would have been much less than it is today. So we drove most of those initiatives prior to the lockdowns that occurred in Tasmania last year. Fortunately, Tasmania only had three weeks of lockdown. But our employees were able to continue operating as if there was no impact because every system we had, including telecommunications, and everything we had was in the cloud. And our employees kept serving the community while councils around us were laying employees off and were unable to serve the community. So it was really a profound impact. And it was that point in time when the employees, who may have been more resistant to change and who may have used my name in vain very frequently, came to me and said, Jeff, we finally understand why we've done this. You have put us in a good position to continue to operate.
You know, I love that model, Jeff, because there's two key things that stood out to me. Number one, you talk about ADCAR is IT is now coming in as a true partner, right? Because the traditional stereotype of IT, IT would be, hey, we're rolling out a new system. You're on your own, my way or the highway. That's a typical model that organizations see IT. And once IT rolls out a technology, there's no thinking of, well, maybe no thinking is not the right term for it, but there's limited engagement between IT and the business because rightfully so, IT still has to, you know, take care of the system, keep the lights on. Whereas with the cloud, that's less of an issue. So the first point is, having this model, you're coming in as a partner. You're serving your colleagues as to, and hoping that it will meet the needs that they have. The second piece is the comment you made where people coming back to you and say, oh, wow, I now understand, while it may be hard to change early on, but we see the value. And the second point is, longer term, if you want to drive new initiatives and hoping to drive more change, it somewhat gets easier.
Yeah, it certainly does. It does become a lot easier. I sort of refer to it as building up your change muscle. It's often organizations become very static. They tend not to drive a lot of change. And I certainly found in the early days, we, you know, we really transitioned from that period of resistance to change to now we have employees that, in my view, are tremendous innovators in their own right, who are coming to the leadership team frequently saying, hey, we've got a great idea. What about doing this? What about this? And they become to accept change and want to drive it themselves. It certainly has put this council in an enviable position across this state to be seen as a leader in being more modern in how we operate. And most importantly, in my view, that culture that I spoke of that was quite broken when I joined, and from what I've seen in many councils, is certainly quite broken, has radically transformed. And that's what we're most proud of as a leadership team, is the positive culture that we have in this organization.
That's awesome. And as a result of these positive changes and this openness to try new things now, can you share some examples of maybe some services or initiatives that the council has been providing that they weren't doing before? And maybe during COVID, right? I'm sure there are use cases you can share and draw and really benefited the community you serve.
Yeah, certainly. There are quite a few, but one that certainly stands out. Councils were very paper-based. They operated with paper. And if you're a member of the community and you wanted to do a dog registration or apply for a parking permit, you had no choice but to drive into the city and pay for parking, spend time in a queue, waiting to meet with a council customer service officer just to fill out a piece of paper. And sometimes you had to take the paper away, come back with a few other bits and pieces of information that you needed in order to complete your application. We transitioned about 90 paper-based forms that the community used to engage with council to be online electronic forms. And those forms have not only good for the customer in terms of filling out the form electronically online, but the backend processes to support the transition of that data through the council's core business systems meant increased efficiency for employees. So we had many of those completed before that lockdown. And the take-up by the community of online and electronic forums just skyrocketed. So again, where other councils could only operate in paper-based forms, their services had to be decommissioned at that time. So our community came a long way, and even today, because they, you know, we're an aging population in Tasmania, and you've got an older generation that may not be comfortable in transacting in an online platform. This community has become very comfortable in transacting online. And they've maintained that post-pandemic, which has been absolutely fantastic. So that's probably one of the key sort of initiatives amongst many, Ducks, that really made a big impact in the community.
You speak of other councils looking up to your council, serving as that model. So how are you supporting other councils? Do you do workshops, or do they come in and intern with you all? Or maybe in some ways, do you scale your service to offer it to other councils as well?
Yeah, that's a good question. Very interestingly, I found when I joined Devonport, they were looking at an initiative that was a very costly initiative to replace an asset management system. And the first question I always ask is, what are other councils doing? And the response I got back is, well, we don't know what the city of Launceston is doing. Well, let's go find out. Let's ring them up and find out and learn from them. And so I'm really big on opening that door and offering, you know, to support other councils, knowing that they're doing great things as well, and we can learn from them. So some of the things that we've done, we've spent a tremendous amount of time individually with councils. I have visitors from councils every week coming in from all across the state that we spend a lot of time with. They've heard about the awards that Devonport City Council has won. They want to go that direction. They don't know how. And they asked Devonport, how did you do it? What can you do to help us out? We also formed through LG Professionals, or Local Government Professionals Tasmania, an Innovation and Digital Transformation Special Interest Group. So I worked with LG Pro to form that group. We meet every three months. We're meeting next week. Pull together a lot of great topics to go on the agenda. A lot of great partners are now involved in that, including Apppoint. And thank you very much to Apppoint for taking part in that. But it's about bringing councils together so that we can learn from each other. How do we drive these sort of initiatives within our organization? What I've found is, and I very much agree in presentations that I've done before, KPMG had an article in 2018 that indicated that councils have a lack of leadership, skill, and resources they need in order to drive that digital transformation. And well, what else is lacking? You know, leadership, skills, resources. Those are the key things that they need to drive these initiatives. And all these councils are facing that same struggle. They're saying, we don't have the resources because we have to run lean for the community. Leadership doesn't get it because they don't understand it. They don't know what they're buying into. And particularly in Tasmania, it's hard to secure the skills that you need to drive these sort of transformations. So really, for us, it's just about bringing these councils together to offer assistance. I've spent a lot of time, Ducks, with councils, working directly with their leadership teams and other key staff to try and help get them onto the path of improving. And some have started, others are still trying to find their way, but they're all wanting to go that direction. So those are a few of the things we've done, Ducks, to try and bring councils together.
No, that's fantastic. And especially now that we're in the post-pandemic world, where there's a lot of different needs, be it at the public sector level or even private sector, on what the future of work looks like. That's yet another challenge, I would say, or even opportunity for organizations like yourself to help shape that, because nobody has it figured out. But having been one of the leaders in the forefront of leveraging technology, trying new ways to do things, I think can help form a model as to where other councils can definitely emulate or even improve upon what you've worked on.
No, absolutely. That's right. And I'm very driven to see these councils improve. They're all really eager to move on that journey. They see what the, they see the benefits. They recognize the impact that it's had on Devonport City Council. Most are aware of the fact that we just continue to operate remotely. And as a matter of fact, in keeping with that cultural shift, we're the only council in Tasmania, and I'm not sure how many other councils across the country do this, but post-the-lockdown, we implemented remote work agreements. And today, we've got 60 employees that have taken up remote work agreements, and they alternate between being remote and working in the office. And that's been a real attractor for, you know, some of the top talent from other councils. When we have roles come open, they look at that and say, wow, that's fantastic. What a benefit. It's a real mindset change from where this council was, and most councils are, where managers were saying, Ducks, is that his desk at 8:00 AM? Yes, he's all good. He's working. Ducks stayed there until 5:00. Well done. Thanks for working hard. We've moved that mindset away from being at the desk to being about outcomes, to being about the deliverables that employees bring and not about time management. And certainly, the best and brightest around the state are looking at Devonport and saying, that looks great. We'd certainly be interested in being a part of that. And, you know, we've got a lot of new starters recently that are coming from neighboring councils that really feel the, you know, the difference in culture.
Now you've proven that this can be done. And as you speak with other leaders in other councils, what do you think is really the major holdback that's preventing from councils to really start in this journey?
Yeah, Ducks, look, again, I guess I would say it's the leadership skills and resources. Again, it really comes down to that. You know, I spoke about the corporate role being about chasing the revenue and containing cost in order to maximize profitability. In local government, and government, as you know, they're not having to chase any more revenue. If you're a citizen in our municipality, you're paying your rates, whether you like it or not, and it's secured revenue. Unfortunately, I think that drives a different sort of mindset. And it's not one of focused on operating lean. Lean, and I don't know, Ducks, if you're familiar with it, but continuous improvement and lean is very big in a lot of organizations, and it certainly was in Caterpillar. And it's about stripping the waste out of your operations. I think because government and local government is not chasing the revenue, they're not as incentivized to strip the waste out of their operations. So as much as they'd say that they run at the lowest possible cost, I saw as one example, it's quite interesting, when I stepped into this council, we, again, we have, say, 175 employees. We have five locations around the city. And there were eight different telecommunications providers and five different PABXs supporting those employees. And what are we doing here? Why do we have this complexity? Well, Jeff, the answer was, we just go after the cheapest at the time. And I said, look, I'm gonna show you how going after the cheapest at the time means you're paying more at this time. And your systems don't work, they're broken, employees are frustrated, customers are frustrated. We're just gonna go through an exercise and consolidate this down to one carrier, increase the value, improve the level of service, and remove the requirement for our IT to have to keep the lights on and hand it over to the experts through, you know, outsourcing to a cloud provider. So councils are, I think that's the challenge. They're not, their cultures are not driven always to strip that waste out of their operations. And if they were, they would look to improve their processes, which means that they have to invest in systems that are going to better enable those efficient processes. So again, it's leadership skills and resources. The only way this is going to work for any council is that they need to be able to engage individuals with the right skills. So they're gonna have to commit the resources to that. And leadership is going to have to be completely behind it and deeply engaged in that change. And I think for Devonport, what's made the difference is, I came out of a world where I was Chief Information Officer. I had experience in a technology world, but I'm stepping into a Deputy General Manager role. So I'm in a leadership position, and it made it a lot easier, you know, from that perspective, to drive that change. You mentioned, Ducks, earlier about IT and trying to drive these sort of technology initiatives. My view is, is that IT can't drive those initiatives. IT is about turning the lights on and keeping the lights on. But they're not about the embedding of that change within the organization and getting the best out of those systems to make sure that the employees can use them most effectively. And typically, not always, I'm saying, but typically, the experience is, that's where IT really lets the organization down, is that ability to get that buy-in for this change, to connect that technology to the new processes.
Absolutely. And I think we're also at a juncture now where it's, I would say, it's a perfect storm. You mentioned about citizens. So I live in the Greater Washington DC area. For me, as a citizen, in my county, I have an expectation of the quality of service that my local government should provide me because the experience I'm having in my personal life. So for example, when I do online shopping, when I order stuff, I have visibility on when it's gonna be shipped. Once it's shipped, if I don't like it, I can send it back. So that visibility, that accountability, that reliance on technology to provide me that, I think it's driving that demand to, or expectation, my local government. Just like you said, all the forms now you have are being filled online. I'm sure the constituents and the people in the city are quite happy about it. And fast forward to today, they're used to it. So there's that level of expectation and demand that's coming from the citizens as well that will help push that change in organizations, in the public sector organization.
Yeah, that's right, Ducks. I was aware a few years ago of a gentleman with Municipal Association of Victoria who made the comment that if councils don't change in the next five to 10 years, they'll struggle to remain relevant to their local population. And I truly, you know, believe that to be the case. I believe that, as you say, Ducks, you know, there's a younger generation that are accustomed to operating online and doing everything online. And then they'll be asking the question, why do I have to come into your council and come to your counter in order to complete that application? It just doesn't make any sense. So everything we've done, the focus has been about the community and the customer and making sure that service delivery is as frictionless as possible to make it as easy as possible to engage with the community. We just recently, 1st of July, Ducks, now only council in Tasmania, and probably one of very few in Australia, that introduced a chatbot on our website. And obviously, chatbots have been around for a period of time now, and organizations are using those extensively, but not heard of in local government. And our chatbot is used extensively every single day, and she's getting smarter and smarter. And what that means is, that means that there's a lot more self-service to the community, quicker answers and responses. It cuts down on the calls in the council and some of the friction that comes with the back and forth to try and find that answer for the member of the community. We've got a chatbot providing those answers online now. So those are little things that, you know, we continue to build upon to try and make that service delivery much more frictionless for our community.
That's awesome, Jeff. I could go on and on and pick your brain on stuff that y'all have worked on. But before we wrap up, right, if you were boil it down to one thing, one thing, any public sector leader can do in making IT in making IT shifts happen, what advice and what tip would you offer?
I like to keep it, like you say, very simple, Ducks. And if I'm going to boil it down to the basics, I said that every system we have, we move to the cloud. We don't want to own and support technology. It's not our core business. Move it to the cloud. And that frees and unchanged the employee from their desk and allows them to work anywhere, anytime to support the community and to improve their collaboration with each other. It must be full mobility to support that migration to the cloud. And then lastly, councils are overly complex for a host of reasons. Must simplify. So cloud, mobile, simplify. That must be on the mind of every leader and every council. And every dollar they spend and every project they run must link back to those three things.
Fantastic, Jeff. Again, truly, we're very grateful for, for having you here and spending some time with us. And for everybody listening, thank you again for tuning into this episode. Until the next time, be safe and take care.
Shift Happens Podcast.
Thanks for listening. As the work of Jeffrey and the Devonport Council have shown, you don't have to be a metropolis to deliver next-level digital services. And driving change isn't just about the tools. It's also the culture. Focus on the value of building alliances with other organizations, upscaling your own staff, and making sure leaders at the top are ready to support progressive IT change. Then, by identifying pain points in the technologies that can make life easier, the benefits for your team and the community are endless. If you liked today's episode, please leave a review for the Shift Happens Podcast on Apple Podcasts or whatever platform you use to listen. We'll see you next time.